This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to call this meeting to an end.
Want to call this meeting to an end? Okay, roll call vote Shannon.
Mayor Trujillo.
Here.
Commissioner Campos.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles, would you lead us in prayer and pledge, sir?
Could you repeat that David? I didn't hear you.
Would you lead us in prayer and pledge, sir?
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thankful for all, thank you for all that you do in watching over us, keeping us safe, and keeping us on the right path. We ask that you provide guidance to the families that have been stricken with sickness and loss, and help lift up their hearts. We ask that you watch over our country, healthcare workers, first responders, with all the chaos they are dealing with today in their lives. We ask that you watch over the families and people of our community, and give them reassurance that they may have promise in their lives. And Heavenly Father, I ask of you that can you watch over us as city commissioners, that we make the right decisions today for the betterment of the city and for the people of the city? In Lord's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the union of all.
A perfect friendship.
Among united cultures.
Thank you, Commissioner. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
I'll second it. Motion was made by Commissioner Gandy, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, roll call vote Shannon.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowles?
Yes.
Commissioner Campos?
Yes.
Mayor Trujillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
There will be no staff report tonight because this is a special meeting. I'm going to move on to public comment. Yes, ma'am. State your name and your position, please.
Laura Brock, the Personnel Board Chairman. Mayor Commissioners, as the City Personnel Board Chairman, on behalf of the city employees, we want to thank you for taking our request under consideration. We understand cuts must be made, and that you all need to look at the overall interest of the city. We respect your hard decisions, and we want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.
There's no more public comment? Go ahead, you watch, uh, action item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021-004. Consideration of Resolution for Budget Reductions approved of January 21st.
Uh, if anybody's listening, can you please mute your mic? Is it 104 or what is it?
It's 004.
Commissioner Bernard, could you repeat yourself, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for Resolution 2021-004. Consideration of Resolution for Budget Reductions approved at the January 7th, 2021 meeting.
Say again? Okay, say again. Thank you, Commissioner. Motion was made by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Campos. James?
Yes, sir, Mayor Commissioners, we had sent this out last night. Going back through the numbers for the commission to consider the employees' request to have the option to take 18 furlough days in lieu of the 15% salary reduction. That was approved by the City Commission. The 18 furlough days would be the equivalent of the 15% salary reduction. However, staff felt that with the furlough days, they would be more likely to, when things start to recover, that they would have their original salaries, for instance, a lot easier instead of percentage increments. They also felt that by having furlough time, it would allow them to potentially obtain a second job somewhere, or just spend more time at home. Basically, they would work less hours but for the same rate of pay. So we went through, and as discussed at our meeting on Monday night, we did look at our personnel reductions, and based on the different types of employees who had either had required a reduction in force or through resignation because they found employment somewhere else, or retirements, we found some savings there. We put together numbers for you that would reflect, and we separated this out, an administrative salary for the six admin staff who are exempt, overtime exempt for us, FLSA, a 15% reduction, which would result in the segment seen on the screen. We also put in the option of either a, the option for the employee of 15% pay reduction or 18 furlough days. And then, of course, operational and overtime reductions, which still hits us around 1.566 million over the next six months. So what we have looked at is some of the logistics behind a furlough. It is doable, but it will take some changes. First of all, what we are recommending is that the employees could be given the option to either take that 15% reduction or they can do the 18 furlough days over the next six months. But the department would need to approve this. We do have concerns to make sure that we can still operate those departments. Also, public safety, especially our field personnel who are on shift. That might be a challenge, but I know that Chief Rodriguez and Chief Lizardo have been looking at different ways that potentially be. The equivalent of the 18 furlough days, we would need to take it over the next six months. This would equal six hours minimum per week. So these can actually be managed, but through the reduction in our public operating hours. So I did a review with the departments that will discuss tonight, a proposed operating schedule that does meet and create a 34-hour work week. It will reduce some of our public occupancy of facilities, such as City Hall, but that's primarily due to sanitation. So for instance, with this one schedule that we have, this will be for City Hall code enforcement, planning and zoning, our motor vehicle department, and municipal court. And then any of the administrative or day staff, or fire and police departments. So of course, closed on Saturdays and Sundays. The public hours, Monday through Wednesday, would be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Staff would not report until 8:00 a.m., but they would work until 5:30. The only change is a delay in opening and arrival at work by 30 minutes. On Thursdays, open up at 8:00, staff arrive at 8:00. There's a title on that particular schedule, or, well, actually, there's not. Public hours would still be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., but we would actually close our public occupancy and lobby at 2:00 to allow for clean. At City Hall, we would still answer our phones. We would still work with customers at the drive-through. We would need that three hours so we could dedicate folks to answer those phones and handle those customers who may have a need to contact us, to work with them over the phone. But as far as being able to come to the building on Thursdays after 2:00 p.m., we wouldn't allow that because we would actually be cleaning. Because the biggest change is we would be closed in private on Fridays. That would create a 34-hour work week for these departments. When we look also at another department, our convenience station, we would keep the same schedule, but we would actually delay opening by one hour on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We would open up at 9:00 a.m., we would still close at 5:00. Staff would report. On Thursdays, we're currently closed to the public, but from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the personnel at the solid waste station are assisting our parks and cemetery departments. We have limited staffing there. On Fridays, we would still operate from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. On Saturdays, our schedule would still, it's our heaviest day, our schedule still would remain at 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. But this would also create a 34-hour work week at that particular facility. I would like to circle back to our City Hall. I did run, looking at energy consumption, I did run some figures based on actual bills for the previous calendar year. What we're looking at is over the next six months between, with these modified occupancy hours, over the next six months, the combination of our library, motor vehicle, and City Hall, we would see a savings in our electric bill only of about, almost $1,900 over the next six months. Mainly because we still would have a need to heat and cool even though at a lower temperature, to heat and cool. But the majority, and I believe it's about 53% of our consumption comes from lighting, as well as the miscellaneous operated things such as our computers, which staff should be already shutting those things off before we go home, so they're not sitting idle. The last thing is take-home vehicles. I know that early on, when we enacted the budget scale back plan that we had adopted back in 2015, one of the things that we did was eliminate take-home vehicles. This did affect everybody, whether they were public safety or not. In looking at it, we did restore for those who live in the city limits the ability, if they are on call, to utilize their take-home vehicles. So for instance, code enforcement, our utilities departments. If they're on call, that way they don't have to travel to the office location and then go to the site. Our police officers, we did allow our three K-9 officers to take their vehicles home because there's simply no other way to transport their canines in a civilian vehicle. You need to transport them in the police unit. But we did look at, we have 16 of our, I'm sorry, 11 officers who do live outside the city limits, 11. We did look, just from a cost standpoint, the mileage ranges, it ranges anywhere from round trip mileage from the police station to their house, anywhere from seven to 45.2 miles. So assuming that those vehicles get about 18 miles in the gamut, and just rounding the fuel up to $2 for just the gasoline, we would have some costs associated with additional mileage for maintenance issues, but $2 will be a good number at this point in time. We would be looking at every month, just for the community, round trip community, for those folks, 600, well, $652.98 with an annual cost of $7,800. And I know that everyone knows that it's hard to recruit and retain police officers anywhere, not just Lovington. I was actually on a conference call with the New Mexico City Managers Association yesterday, and everywhere, they're having a shortage of officers. And this could be one thing that is at a minimal cost to us, provides a benefit, to shorten response times, but also helps to hopefully retain some of our certified officers by allowing them to commute. Granted, they will be commuting outside of the city limits. Lovington has been sticking with the chief's recommendation of about, is it, was it 30 miles, sir?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 30 miles. This could be doable at a very minimal, minimal impact that would have long-term benefits for us. And that is our recommendation. One other thing we would like the commission to consider is, if you recall, when we activated our online payment portal, as well as the automated phone system, we have for many, many years charged the $3 for credit card transaction, and that helps us recoup the average cost that you have to pay to the credit card processing company on those utility bills. The automated phone system and the online payment portal, the vendor charges, charges not only that $3 fee, which comes directly back to the city, but they do charge a $1.25 processing fee, which is actually charged separately to the customer, and the city never sees that. We stopped taking payments over the phone when the system was activated, and mainly that is to protect the city and the taxpayer from fraud. When we take a payment over the phone, we are assuming that that person is who they say they are. We obtained the credit card number, we obtained the three-digit code, and hopefully, it does show up, it never shows up as the cardholder's name. And we've had multiple disputed transactions that people say, "Well, I didn't authorize that payment." So in order to protect the city from those potential fraudulent charges, and then having to repay the disputed transactions, the decision was made to make sure that we just, if individuals want to call in and they want to make a payment over the phone, that they would be required to use the automated phone system. We are recommending, actually, our water department staff are recommending that even for an in-person charge to make it equitable, that it's $4.25 even if you come in person and make that charge on the credit card. The only way for people to avoid those fees is to either pay by check, pay with cash, or money in order. They can either come into the building and do that, or use the drive-through, or they can set up an auto draft directly from their bank account. There's absolutely no charge on that, and you don't have to worry about making your payments on time. But we would request that, much in our summary, that the commission would amend their amend their budget reduction plan that was approved on the 7th of January to include the, the only change would be to include the furlough days, that's an option for those employees, in lieu of the 15%. Allow for the modification of facility hours, as published in this, will go into effect next week, and allow for the $4.25 processing fee, in addition to allowing the use of take-home vehicles by our police officers who live outside the city. And that's all I have.
I'm going to open the floor for discussion. Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to add or take off this?
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
James, first of all, I know that your personal life is pretty difficult right now, and I want to thank you for the time and effort you put into this. I know that it is very time-consuming, and so I thank you for that, first of all. Second of all, I knew that we had talked about the 20% admin additional reduction for them, but in looking at the big picture, they're held to a higher standard, they're held to a higher accountability for their departments. The long run is, it was only going to be about $17,000 extra savings, so the bottom line is, I think, we're good at 15. So I thank you for that time in discussion with that as well. And thirdly, I just wanted to see, is Gary present today? James?
Yes, sir, Commissioner Campos, he is present.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to ask Gary a question if I could.
Yes, sir.
Gary, are you there?
Yes, sir.
All right, what say you, Gary? Do you concur with this data that's been presented to us?
Yeah, this is, what's really important is that we're making the accomplishment of creating these reductions over this time period. And as far as identifying one number and saying that's exact or not, it's really not material in that if one number was 10,000 different than another. So what I'm telling you is that yes, I'm happy with these numbers.
All right, thank you, Gary. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, James, Scott Bold here.
Yes, sir.
Would you be able to go back to your first, the first thing that you showed us there? As far as your numbers? Okay, thank you. I have a couple questions here, and I'm going to start from the bottom going up. With overtime, $2,011, 2,000, 211, 458,000 overtime, I agree with. $400,000 in operations, that's good. 3,000, 396,104 furlough? That is correct. Now, there's a discrepancy on the first one to the second one here as far as with the 15% on the admin. The first one we received was 47,110. This one here is 51,037. Could you please explain that?
If I may, Commissioner, I can explain that. Essentially, what we have here with the 51,037 is the difference between taking exactly six months' pay, 1,040 hours, compared to Gary's numbers in the last presentation, where I was talking about payroll periods, and how many hours we would have during the next six months based on the number of remaining payrolls that would end at June 30th. So the 47,000 is taking the same exact hourly rate, multiplied by the same, by 960 hours, which is one paid period less essentially than what we have here with this 51,000.
Okay, thank you, Gary, on that. Okay, next I have with the personnel reductions. Thursday, January 7th, we received a Thursday, January seventh, we received a paper stating that we're a hundred and twenty-nine positions. Twenty-seven people were going to be let go. So we're going to have a hundred and two positions left open, meaning that we are going to get rid of twenty-seven people. Here it states twenty-two people. Now, how did we get that number to twenty-two?
So, yes, sir. So, uh, uh, as we have had discussed on Monday, uh, when we came up with the original thirty positions, this was based on a dollar amount savings, uh, per department. It equaled the thirty employees. Now, this was assuming employees, uh, I guess you would say, uh, following the, the reduction force methodology lined out, uh, by, uh, personnel ordinance where you would eliminate, uh, positions that were probationary, part-time and those with lesser experience and then you would move into the recommendation of the, uh, department. And at that point, due to the various staff, uh, re, uh, types of reductions, uh, that we had, in fact, you know, we have one individual, uh, who, uh, with their salary and benefits, you know, an entry level position, uh, would have been with, with the salary and benefits that they have, would have been forty-four thousand, uh, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Uh, but we have one individual, uh, who had left prior to the, uh, the, the budget reductions and they, with their salary and benefits that they were making, they were actually making, uh, being compensated a total of ninety-two thousand. So when we looked at this, uh, we felt confident with this particular number and stopping because the only other positions that we could eliminate would have come from police and fire and the field operations. Uh, so that's how we arrived at the twenty-two versus the thirty, where the, the actual twenty-seven.
So we're looking at a hundred, having a hundred and seven employees now? Is that what we're looking at?
Yes, I believe that is correct, sir, yes.
Okay, because I didn't know if we were still looking at the hundred and two employees or not.
No, sir, uh, and we, we had discussed, Commissioner Bold, we had discussed that, you know, with, uh, we're only looking at a difference of about a hundred and twenty-six thousand, if I recall correctly, uh, in the personnel reductions, but the only way, uh, that we could achieve that would be to eliminate, uh, more than likely three, uh, public safety positions, uh, which we really, uh, it would deplete the manpower and, uh, cause not only public safety issues but personnel safety issues at the same time. So it was our recommendation to go ahead and halt those personnel reductions at this point.
So we're looking at having a hundred and seven employees? That's what we're looking at, James?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got my math correct, that's all. Okay, thank you. I have no other questions at this moment.
Commissioner Gandy, uh, would you like to include something, sir?
So I have a question on the recommendation page. It says allow employees to choose between furlough days or fifteen percent reduction. So the employee is making that choice?
I can, I can answer that, Commissioner, uh, Gandy. We, we had, uh, I, I know when we first discussed this, I had asked, uh, a couple of the employees who had approached me about, well, couldn't we do furloughs instead? Find out if there's employees who would rather do a furlough or would they rather take a fifteen percent salary reduction? There may be some who would rather, I, I doubt it, but would rather work, uh, do the same amount of work for less pay or do the furlough. Now, if we do approve, uh, the reduced operating hours of, of city facilities, uh, the employees would have to do the furlough days with the exception unless, uh, Chief Lizardo and, uh, Chief Rodriguez have figured a means for, uh, our police officers out in the field and our, our fire and EMS staff out in the field, a way for them to actually safely take furlough time as well. But we wouldn't want to just allow employees to say, well, I want to go and do furlough days, instead of the fifteen percent, unless the department had approved it. And to be honest, it would be easier to do the furlough option, uh, from a logistical standpoint because we wouldn't want somebody to, uh, say, well, I want to take five furlough days in one chunk and then they wait until the last two weeks of the year. Uh, it would be a logistical nightmare, I guess you could say, to make sure that everybody hits their furlough target in a timely manner.
Okay, well, I disagree with the furloughs, um, just because of the logistic, logistics nightmare and the fact that, you know, it, what, what services we're providing for the community and so that, I really have an issue with that. I'm, I'm more with the salary reduction and everybody still working their forty. I mean, there's, there's quite a few of us here in the community that took pay cuts and are still working, uh, you know, our forty hours with less pay. So I do have an issue with that. Um, if we do the furloughs, our, I mean, we're still charging our customers the same amount for all our services, but they're not seeing a benefit in reduction in services or cost. So that, that's another concern I have. So with this plan, are we getting back to the one-twelfth reserve that we're required to have?
If I may, your mayor, commission, we, with this specific plan, we, depending on how all the, the reductions are applied, we will be able to maintain our current operations. As far as actually recovering to meet our reserve requirements, we would have to do a lot more.
So if my numbers, and these are my numbers and they're, you know, questionable at best. So I'm figuring we need an extra three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars a month for the next six months to get back to the one-twelfth and still be able to maintain our community. So the way I have that figured, um, on a twelve thousand popul-, twelve thousand people population, half of that is children or whatever. So you're looking at five to six thousand people carrying that burden of about eighty dollars extra a month out of their pocket just to get us through this time if we have businesses that don't open up and generate some type of, uh, gross receipts for our community.
That, that sounds right.
Okay, well, I just thought I'd throw them numbers out there for you.
Commissioner Gandy, and I'd like to say something on that. Uh, I think right now it would keep it where we're not creating more debt and, and hopefully, uh, with the price of oil increasing and so forth and, uh, our TRTs will continue to rise. I think right now, as long as we're not getting any more debt, I think that's objective now. And, uh, but the forecast is looking good for us, for our economy that, that hopefully in about ninety days, we'll start seeing a big difference. And hopefully we'll have a, meet more GRT come in to, to put back in, in the cupboard that, that we've taken out and, and bring up our, our reserves. But currently, what, the only reason I, I like this plan is because at least we're not adding more debt. We, we, this will stop the debt, but, uh, hopefully GRTs will, will resolve the other issues which we have, uh, to, to fill back up our reserves and so forth. And we're counting on that, so I'm hoping that, that it does take place. If not, we'll be, again, making more adjustments.
Well, I, I understand, I'm just saying that I feel that for the next three months, we're probably going to be mid to low or mid to high three hundred range. Um, maybe four, we might get in the fours for Christmas, but, I mean, with the majority of our citizens going out of town and purchasing gifts and doing different things because this, across the state line, I don't going to see, I don't foresee us getting a kick until maybe, uh, April, you know? So that, that's my concern is, you know, we've got a, we're pretty heavy with our, what we owe plus the downturn of the receipts. So, you know, I just, we're not a revenue generating business. So, you know, I just, we still have to provide a service to a certain degree and cutting hours and when people can come and different things like that. I just, you know, it's, it's, I, I don't see the benefit there.
I, Commissioner Bold, I mean Commissioner Gandy, sir, and, and the reason I agree with this plan is because it's, it's controlled by, by us, the board as well as the staff and it's not, uh, when you've got four or five people asking for a furlough day and then all of a sudden you're going to cure overtime or, or you may only have one person in the water department because you have one sick, the other, uh, you got two on furlough and so forth, it's going to create a mess. So that's what I like about this plan and, and reduction, uh, operation hours because it's more manageable and, uh, and you meet that deadline every month. What I feared when I had this discussion with James is that everybody's going to limit their furlough time and one month, we might meet our, our goal, next month we won't. And at this point, we know we're meeting our goal every month because just like you stated, we only have X amount coming in per month and that's the only operation money we have. So we have to operate within that means. And, uh, under this plan, we have, we have control. We're, we're meeting our goal every month and not having to, hopefully people are going to take their furloughs today or evenly and create chaos within the, and maybe create overtime. This way we know we're not going to have overtime, uh, because it's managed. And that's why I like this plan.
Okay, well, it'll just be something we have to disagree on.
Yeah, but no, no, but I, I understand your concerns and, and I respect your concerns, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, another question, one final question for James. James, considering the, uh, the furlough, um, I, I think, uh, I think I know the answer, but, uh, just for the record, this, if the employees opt to participate in the furlough, that will not affect their ability to receive insurance benefits, correct?
Oh, oh, no, sir. Uh, Commissioner Compost, one of the things, uh, federal law changed previously that, uh, as long as you work thirty, thirty hours per week, we, we are required to provide benefits. So this was, would not affect the benefits that we offer the employees.
Very good. Uh, I for one do, I am in favor of the, uh, the furlough days. This is one thing that the citizens, the, the city employees asked of us and I don't think there's too much to grant. Uh, are services going to be affected? Absolutely. I mean, everybody, everybody's services are affected right now because of the pandemic and the downturn of the, uh, oil, oil field and the economy, that's a given. But I think if we start bringing people in and working them the same amount of hours for less pay, you're going to see a mass exodus from the city. And we cannot afford to take that chance. We need to take care of our employees the best we can with what we got and, and work with them and acknowledge the, their importance in our community and in our workforce. I understand we can't do that with all departments, but, uh, if we can help as much as we can, I think we're, we have a duty to respond to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Compost. Is there any other further discussion?
I have, I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Gandy.
Can somebody tell me where all these jobs are at? I mean, because I may need to go get a job. I mean, I keep hearing that there's jobs and opportunities that pay as well as my city for an eight-hour, or if you work Saturday, Sunday, maybe a sixteen-hour shift that are just so plentiful in Lee County. I, I just want to know where they're at.
They're out there, they might not be in Lee County, but they might be in Texas. I know a lot of people who have moved out of New Mexico for that particular reason. So the jobs are there, they're hard to find, but they're there.
But they got to move, their house loses value here. Some of us are going to stay here no matter what, just like in the mid-eighties. So, you know, I'm just, so you're saying we're going to have a hundred and two employees move to Texas?
I never said that, Commissioner Gandy. I'm just telling you that we're going to have an exodus because I've talked to these employees. I know what they're thinking. And in a time like this, people are going to do whatever it takes to take care of their families. I don't, I wouldn't blame them, I'd do the same thing.
But I understand their families and their goals. But as a commissioner, my goal is to protect the city in a financial crisis. And I understand they're taking a cut in wages, but I'm pretty sure every one of us has seen a cut somewhere during this last little downturn. And, I mean, we're still at the same jobs even though we may have taken a twenty, thirty percent cut. So, I just-
I understand that, Commissioner. Let me ask, let me ask you a question. Are you going to do their job when they leave for the same amount of pay they're making right now?
Who says there's not somebody in the community that won't do their job?
I'm asking you, would you do it?
Why wouldn't I?
So you're saying you would?
I'm saying if I needed a job and I didn't see anything else and I had the qualifications, yeah, I could do that job. You're, you're-
We might be looking at that.
That, you know, not everyone makes a lateral move, not everyone always goes up. But you're paying employees the same benefits, the same money for less productivity. So I, I, I just, I don't get it. I mean, we're a community, we've got to keep our services at a certain standard. Yes, we're having to pay less, but we don't really generate money. And the only way we can generate that money is either lean heavily on our citizens with more taxes or some type of revenue. That's the only way we can adapt at this time. And by giving our employees more time off, I, I, I don't get it. It doesn't make any sense to me business-wise.
Well, and I understand you're looking at it from the business perspective. Uh, I, I understand it completely, Commissioner, but I'm looking at it from the, from the city employee perspective. So let's just agree to disagree about that.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, I would like to amend my motion. I would like to make a motion to amend my motion from last meeting, January seventh, to include fifteen percent admin, staff reduction, eighteen-day furloughs with department head approvals, approved modifications of hours to allow the officers' take-home units outside of town and also to increase credit card fees to four twenty-five for in-person transactions for the city.
Commissioner Butcher, uh, did you make mention of the, uh, since I, I would second the motion, did you make mention of the, uh, option for the fifteen percent reduction in employee or the, the furloughs to have, with employees to have a choice? I'm not su-, I'm not sure that I heard that.
The insight to, to approve the eighteen furloughs with department's approval. Department heads.
And are you including the fifteen percent?
Fifteen for admin.
Salary reduction as well?
Fifteen percent admin status. Fifteen percent for admin instead of, and staff.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Commissioner Butcher, seconded by Commissioner Compost. Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, go call, Lieutenant.
I'm sorry, you had, oh. Did you repeat that, Shannon, was that for me?
Yes.
My vote is yes.
Everybody on the bus needs to mic, it's your, oh, it's your. Commissioner Bold, I think it's, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Bold?
Yes.
Mayor Elio?
Yes. Resonating passes? I, I appreciate, I appreciate all of us commissioners meeting once again this evening. Want to also thank you for their input as well. I want to thank our employees, I want to thank our management team. And so from this point forward, let's move together as one unit and accomplish our mission and to balance, or continue to balance our budget and, and hopefully the forecast is in, in our best interest and will adapt and overcome. Everybody will be smiling here hopefully in the next ninety days. Do I have a final motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Compost, seconded by Commissioner Gandy. Is there any others? There's no other discussion, roll call.
Mayor Elio?
Yes.
Commissioner Compost?
Yes.
Commissioner Butcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bold?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, gentlemen.